Let's see the election results tonight, see who wins Chicago.
It's gonna be a runoff for sure.
Yeah, but I want to see. All right.
My son's a fan of Brandon.
Adam Chairman.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start, get the meeting started. This is our second meeting of the Administrative Finance Committee as a whole. Today is Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. Good evening. My name is Mary Sullivan. I am the City of Darien Alder Person for Ward Five. I am the Chairperson of the Administrative Finance Committee. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is our second meeting to review and discuss the City of Darien's fiscal year '24 budget. With all Alder Persons, our Mayor, City Treasurer, City Clerk, City Administrator, Senior Staff present in the Council Chambers. We will continue to review, discuss, conduct Q and A, and come to a consensus on the fiscal year '24 budget. The documents you have all received is a collaborative effort with the Mayor Marches, City Administrator Vanna, Treasurer Corin, and our Senior Staff of the City. I will serve as your facilitator. As I mentioned earlier, tonight is a second in a series of meetings with the end goal being to have a public hearing on the budget at the City Council Meeting on Monday, April 3rd, and vote to approve. My goal is to complete the review of the entire budget tonight and conclude our meetings as a whole, and hopefully conclude tonight no later than 9:30. We will take a few breaks along the way as needed. Tonight we'll begin with our Police Budget. Police Chief Greg Thomas is with us, and we've got also our Assistant Jason Norton with us. We will then talk about the two water funds, revisit some budget items that were highlighted in last week's discussion, and we will also have a new item added, the Marquis sign at 75th and Cass. Once that is complete, we will review the MFT and Special Service area. Many of the items in this year's budget were discussed in our Goal Setting Session last fall, and several budget items are carryovers from fiscal year '23. All City Council Members received copies of the budget along with summary pages and supporting documents. All of this information has been published on the City of Darien website. These meetings are being broadcast on DCTV Channel 6 and will be available for viewing on the City of Darien website and YouTube channel. Without further ado, Mayor Marches, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Chairperson.
Treasurer Corin? Okay. Administrator Vanna? Okay. Well, that being said, then we'll dive right into the Police Budget. Chief Thomas? Do you have anything to start us off with?
Just a couple. The, and I'm sure we'll get there. There's a couple places that are heavy. Police pension was a significant increase of about $300,000. So we'll talk about that, I'm sure, as we get there, but it is an inevitable cost that we'll have to pay. And then this year, the Administrative Cars, they're eight years old with all over 100,000 miles, and so it's time to replace those. Those are two big items that are driving up the cost of this year's budget.
Thank you. Okay, so we are at on page 31. That is the Budget Page for Fiscal Year '23-'24 for Police Department Budget. And then the Summary Pages start on page 32. We'll start with the Personnel. Salaries of civilians and officers in overtime. Does anyone have any discussion or questions about that? Yes, Treasurer Corin.
Chief, I noticed you've got indicated 33 members on union salaries. Last year it said 32. Has there been a change in sworn officers?
Proposing a change, yes, and you'll have a decision to make. At the Police Committee, we talked about the increase of one additional officer. The School Districts approached us and asked if we would add an officer and place that officer in the schools as a second school resource officer. It would be a shared school resource officer that would bounce between the schools. None of that discussion has taken place because I don't know that you're gonna fund it yet. So I don't have any more details than what that initial conversation with the Superintendents was. The, it would operate much like the current SRO where they would pay the cost of the officer for the time that they're at school. So you're paying for about a third of an officer in the budget, and they would pay the rest. So in the budget, you had to account for all of it, but on the revenue side, there's some, an increase in the revenue from the schools.
So you're indicating, because I thought they were paying for it, but they're only paying the salary portion of it, none of the benefits? Is that what?
No, it's just the same as the current SRO, so it's salary and benefits for the nine months.
Okay, so essentially, it's, well, it's a three-month cost, basically, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I don't think, Chief, that we have a pension amount built into, you said costs and benefits. It's probably salary, health insurance, those types of things. But it's not calculated like I M R F, so I don't believe we allocate anything for that.
Chief, what schools would this impact?
Again, I'm not sure where that's gonna go. The School Districts wanted them in all the schools. I'm not certain that an SRO is going to value-add in the grade schools without some type of program. So we'll have to make that discussion.
And that's just schools that reside in the City of Darien?
That's correct.
Mary, when I had lunch with all three of the Superintendents, Andrew Wise was going to contract with DuPage County to have officer, an officer in Lakeview Junior High in Pearview. But he had indicated the desire to have a Darien Police Officer in Elizabeth Eyed, which is in Darien. And Bob Langman and Mark Ross had indicated to have an officer in the elementary as well as the junior high. They had already made contact with Jason, I think, regarding this when I had my lunch with them.
Correct.
So when I came back and shared that with the Chief, they already knew that. But they have not, obviously not come back and specified whether or not they really want to go with the program. And I'm gonna see Bob Langman tomorrow, so I may mention something to him.
Well, they, I think it's more in my purview, and it makes no, not a lot of sense to go through multiple meetings, intergovernmental agreements, all those different types of things if the City itself's not gonna fund it. So I think this is the first logical step, and if you're good to go, it gets added to the budget. And then I'll stick making those arrangements, and we'll see if we can get it done by September. It should not be a problem. Or a school year.
Any other discussion on this item? Questions? Do I sense a consensus of support for this added officer to be a school resource officer in the lower-level schools?
I think it's a nice idea. I think it's a good exposure for the children, and I think it. I asked the Superintendents if their parent, the parents would feel comfortable, and they said knowing that there's an officer in the school from time to time will make, will make parents feel very secure.
And what I'm assuming, not that they can't already work directly with the City of Darien on security measures and, and being proactive, I think having an officer, like as an active person on staff, even though obviously one person can't be in three or four or five, six schools at the same time. But that, I think, would just almost improve the lines of communication and the proactiveness.
I think it's gonna improve safety because obviously they're not gonna be, you never know which school that the officer might be in on a given day, and if anybody's planning on, you know, I hate to say it, some kind of active shooter situation, it makes them think twice because you know you're, you're a potential of a police officer at any one, at any given time at one of the schools. Would you, would you, would you agree with that, or am I being too?
No, I think there is some value in that statement. The other issue is, you're correct in that currently what we do is we assign a day shift officer to go there. But he's a patrol officer, and he makes his attempt to be there periodically, but it's not as well as a full-time SRO.
Thank you. Yes, Ted?
Would he help with any traffic? I know that always comes up as a concern here and there. I know he'd probably be in the building, but would he help out with any traffic situations here and there? You get, I get these random emails that parents aren't listening or turning left when they should turn right, or vice versa?
It all depends, and most likely not. Because you want that officer to do things that only a badge can do, and managing traffic flow can be done by other people.
Okay. And the second quick question I had, I noticed on vehicle gas and oil, it's up, if I'm reading it correctly, $12,000. So did we do more driving, or is it fuel?
It's just pure cost.
Does cost? Maintenance? Okay.
And same way, you'll see the same thing in the building as well. I'm not sure the cost, I'd scroll down there, but I know it's more than the last couple of years. It's gone up quite a bit.
Like an oil change the other day was 80 bucks versus 60, so that's synthetic, so.
Sure.
During the summer, would there be, would they, having the extra officer helping prevent overtime or help with vacations that officers take?
It depends on how we.
Or do you have a plan for using the 30/30?
That's probably a better question. The, I was gonna talk about depends where we put them. Currently, the current SRO works in the Investigations Unit when that SRO is not in the schools. So the summertime, long breaks, a lot of times the, we try to have the officers, the SRO, take his vacation time, personal time, those type of things during school, breaks. So then they're available for the school. So all those things will work out generally the same as the current SRO.
Thank you. Any other questions on salaries? Questions on overtime? Benefits? Obviously, Chief started off by prefacing the increase in the police pension.
That's the actuary calculation as far as the amount that's due for the coming year going forward. It doesn't indicate where it'll be. So, I mean, could be higher, could be lower. I know the IML is supporting increasing the amortization period or changing the amortization period. A lot of those things can affect it, but I don't anticipate it going down at all from that number. So I think the numbers Brian has used, he's increased it a little bit in the coming years. Hard to tell because it's investment-related as well as policy-related, depending what the state does in terms of the period of time for funding it. I mean, I guess the one thing from the resident's standpoint that they should be aware that 100%, I think, man, Brian mentioned it last week, 100% of our real estate tax dollars this year are going into funding that pension. So if it does increase in the future, we'll either have to use funds from other sources or look at increasing taxes in order to fund it at the level that it's supposed to be funded at. But nobody really knows those at this point.
Thank you, Mike.
Brian, I mean.
Mike, for, well, at least what I did for the three years is kept the property tax level. And then, yeah, if, should there be an increase, it would just come out of other revenue sources.
Okay. Any other questions on page 32? Summary page 32. Then we're gonna move on to page 33, continuing with operating. Any questions on the operating accounts? Animal Control, Auxiliary Police, Boards and Commissions, Dues and Subscriptions, Investigative Equipment?
Where does the cost for Narcan, what does that expense go into?
Narcan's currently provided to us free of charge.
Okay. And you've got enough of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Liability Insurance? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I have a question on this one. I picked on Dan a little bit last week on this one, Chief. But it has AED, AED replacement to Building 13 cars. Dan had some accounts where there was certain replacement or training and that that needed to be done. Could you explain a little bit more on that? What, because we do have them currently. Are these replaced? These are replacements?
These are replacements. The current AEDs, I believe they're Zoll. They are all 10-plus years and it's into life, and so they need to be replaced. And so you're correct. So it's cost of the devices. We've had some tentative looks, and some of those bids that came back were quite expensive. So I took the most expensive one, not knowing where this was gonna fall.
And the cars, is that a replacement also, or is that something new?
Correct, same thing. Yep.
So for the public watching, every police vehicle on the street has an AED in it?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Maintenance and Equipment? Yes?
For 7600, maintenance for radar signs. Is that just batteries or new signs going up?
No, that's the radar sign itself, and it is, I think we have two of them. And that is cost of batteries, and there's some firmware updates and different things that are associated with that cost.
Anything else on page 33? Moving on to page 34.
Can I just wait?
Yes.
Just noticed some, some of those things in there that you may not have seen before. Cop FTO, Pace, Frontline, a number of those things were purchased, and we did the front end with Equitable Sharing Funds. Tried to buy, purchase the item and then do three-year maintenance agreements. So a lot of these we've had before. We've had them for a number of years, three, four, five years. But now it's time to pay those maintenance fees going forward, and we can't continue to use Equitable Sharing Funds. So that's why you see some of those changes. May not have saw those, but just to bring them to your attention.
Thank you. Mike?
This may be similar to what you're talking about, Chief, but on the maintenance vehicles. It has WatchGuard and Exxon license. Exxon license is new this year. Is that something similar? Or is that something new we're getting?
Exxon license is new. WatchGuard is what we've always had. So there's gonna be a point in time, because the Exxon fleet, the cameras, are not gonna come in for 10 to 12 months. So they will be a part of fiscal year 2024's budget. This will, so we'll have to have both of them for a period of time in 2024. So we'll pay WatchGuard up to the time that we have to replace it with Exxon.
And if that is something new, we can't use the seized funds for that?
We are using seized funds for the original purchase.
Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry, no, no, I misspoke. The fleet, we already have. We used Exxon to purchase the, we used Equitable Sharing Funds to purchase Exxon's body-worn cameras. This is something that we would have to pay for out of the general fund because it's a product we already have.
Any more questions on maintenance vehicles? Moving down the list, any other questions on postage, printing, public relations, rent, supplies, training and education, travel and meetings?
Got one on that one, the travel and meetings. We have under discretionary, a new item, the conference seminar, $7,750.
It's not new. I just broke out the conferences and seminars different than we had in the past. So it's the same money, it's just broken out on the budget, so you see it better.
Thank you. I did see it better.
See, and it worked.
Apparently.
Yes. Telephone, uniforms, utilities?
Question on the uniforms. What's the replacement vest? What's the difference then? We've got five of them at $800 and one at $2,600?
The five are patrols, what generally a patrolman would wear.
Okay.
And, no, I was looking to see if you had a vest on. And then the next one for $2,600 bucks is the vest that a SWAT officer would wear. It's much bigger.
And we've got, we have a vest for the police dog, right?
I believe so.
We had, I don't know if it's still.
Yeah. I'm trying to think. I don't think I ever seen it with it on, but I know we had one. But it's not gonna wear it full-time. It's gonna wear it on a situation. And so I will double-check that though, for sure.
Pardon?
The feedback, we're getting feedback.
Yeah. I'm hearing a vibration over by Dan.
Oh. It's his table.
Okay. Any other questions on page 34? Under page 35, we've got vehicle gas and oil, then contractual services and capital purchases. Any discussion there?
I noticed that the DUCOM has increased by about $37,000. I know that's shares. That makes sense, and they're increasing our allocation for next year?
Yes.
Thank you. And EOP consulting, then something new?
Yes. Actually, I think we started this year. The Emergency Operations Plan has to be done and redone on a constant basis, and it's just ridiculous amount of work that has to be done. And so it's much easier to pay a consultant that does that frequently. To do, there's just tons of forms that have to be filled out with the state. There's meetings. I think she's met with Dan and Brian already, and probably other city staff as part of the, putting the whole EOP together, and then, so it's, it's quite an undertaking.
Any other questions on contractual services?
And you're seeing it for the first time, because again, this is one of the ones that we paid for out of Equitable Sharing Funds, and now it needs to go into the budget.
Did you have a question, Ted?
Yeah.
Anything else on capital purchases? I know you talked at the beginning initially about the administrative vehicles needing to be replaced.
Yes. There's eight, I believe, that, so myself and Jason, the detectives, CSOs, I believe that's it. Cars are seven to eight years old, depending, and have quite a few miles on, and time to replace those vehicles.
And will any of those be hybrid or partially electric at all, or anything like that?
Went online today to check the status of hybrids. Hybrid units sold out for the remainder of the model year. Let's see. We will solicit bids on 2024 models when the specifications are released in mid-2023. So we will look at those, that availability when the time comes. And we've heard a lot of horror stories about the hybrid Ford Explorer. So I checked with a couple of agencies near us that I knew had purchased them, and they would indicate with a warning, "Stop safely now," and then the vehicle would shut off. And we can't have that in law enforcement, and we wanna make sure that those are all correctly done. They went back to Ford Motor Company that said it was a firmware problem, and kinda kicked it back to the Police Department to correct. So those six vehicles that that particular Police Department had are no longer on patrol duty. So obviously, the Administrative Cars operate a little bit differently than all-electric. I'm not sure that an all-electric car is feasible. But this is admin, when we go to the squad cars probably next year, in fact, I know next year. We have 12-hour shifts. I'm not sure that they're gonna get to operate for 12-hour shifts, and I don't know that we're quite ready for that. Even the battery-operated cars, the problem's going to be mechanical. You know, I don't, I'd have to refer to Dan, the expert, but I don't know that Tommy and anybody else is ready. So then you're gonna have to either have training, a second mechanic, or longer maintenance agreements with the dealership that you purchased from. So all kinds of ideas that have to go into there. I would look at hybrids, and from there, I would have to wait until the bids are ready.
Thanks, Chief. Any other questions on equipment? Page 35. Okay, any other items on the Police Department Budget as a whole? Any questions for Deputy Chief Norton or Chief Thomas? Okay.
When I'm looking at these, I'm looking at your training, education, lodging costs. So at 100, per stay $150 a night, that's just guaranteed spot? Or, I mean, how do we, how do we allocate for that?
It's just a wild guess on cost per night to stay somewhere, wherever that training's going to be. The IACP convention is out in San Diego this year. I'm guessing it's gonna be more than 150 a night. A lot of the officers that go to some of the firearms training, range training, is down by Bloomington or Champaign, Decatur. And those you can get for $80 a night. So it's, it's a, it's a guess, best estimate.
Okay.
Okay. If there's a consensus, we'll, we'll move on from the budget and thank you both for joining us this evening.
Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
So we will jump then to the Water Fund Budget Summary, which is page 170. Am I correct in saying that?
Yep.
Okay. Summary page is 170, with the backup following. Any questions on page 170 regarding revenue and overall summary of expenditures?
Mayor, I'm sorry, one comment is, we have not raised the water rates in some time. When I do the three year budget, I always look at a 25 cent increase the following two years. But again, as it's been the last many years, we have not had to increase that. And I think this year, with Dan and the whole department's done such a tremendous job in the water meter replacement, we're certainly not going to switch because all the water meter replacement should do is actually, as it's reading accurate, provide some more revenue into the water fund. Dan, again, as I've told you, please pass on, it's been tremendous, all the change out of the meters and really minimal, minimal issues.
Correct, and I can't agree with everybody more. The team did a great job, the vendors that were involved did a great job. We basically have maybe 100 accounts left out of basically 12, you know, 9, 10,000 and additional, so, and we're on budget.
That's amazing. Tom?
Quick question, in light of what happened in Westmont, is there any additional like safety training or anything to review? I don't know the whole story, what happened in Westmont, but I know sometimes you're digging new lines or sewer or storm drains, it can be very dangerous. So is there any changes there or anything different what happened from Westmont?
No, sir, and again, obviously, what I can't do is comment on what or how happened. I don't know the details, nor would I want to comment on them. I can assure you that the city council has been very gracious with all the safety equipment that the city of their, you know, that we have asked for. We operate in a very safe manner, number one, and if there's an opportunity, or if there's a concern of how something should be done, frontline supervisors, foremen, supervisors, and myself will be called in. There's been situations where we've had 12, 12 foot deep water main breaks, and we had outsourced that, just for this, and the only reason for that primarily was we needed a bigger machine, with that bigger machine, more excavating power, and we need to make a hole bigger. So we do look, we look at angles of repos on water main breaks, and also we have trench, trench boxes in place. And again, situation with valves, we have certain practices of how we enter and exit a valve vault.
Okay.
I got to give kudos to Dan's staff. So my water meter was an anomaly, this is where they put the water meter in, was right behind a furnace. And when the vendor came out, they were thinking that the furnace was going to have to be taken out in order to put that valve in. And his staff figured out a way of doing it without doing it. So his, hats off, hats off to your staff, seriously.
And again, I can't agree with you more, Joe. You know, we put Dennis Cable as our liaison. I think it worked out very well, and, you know, just when you go through such a program, and to have it done, and the amount of time that we had it done, I think is phenomenal. And again, I think everybody involved did a great job.
I mean, you're talking about taking out a furnace, and then these guys had it done in about 45 minutes. That meant they found the skinniest guy in his staff, but that's another story, okay?
There was probably close to 100 situations that were similar to that. But every single one has been handled with, you know, the most professional services that are available.
Thank you for that. Any questions on page 170, additional questions before we dive into the summary pages? And then 171, we'll start going through summary page 172 by account. Yes, Mike?
I did have a comment on 171, I mentioned this to Brian before, I'm not sure whether there's been any resolution, but on 171, on the equipment right under capital, Dan had a new program he was proposing for some logging things, and it indicated it was going to be a three year program, approximately 2,000, $200,000 a year. The out years 25 and 26 showed at 5,000, so I'm not sure the $200,000 got reflected in there, and maybe we can talk about that as we get into the detail, but.
Yeah, Mike, when you'd asked about that, for this draft budget, it's not changed yet. So if that is approved and included in the budget, it would most likely affect the transfer out to the water depreciation fund, or possibly moving that project to depreciation fund. But there would be money available if it was carried out for the three years.
Chairperson, you want me to address that subject right now?
I think we'll do that when we get down into the summary, if that's okay? Keep it in order?
The main driving force is that the end result is $400,000 less somewhere.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll get started with page 172, salaries and benefits. Any questions there? Operating?
Hang on a second.
Mike, no problem, take your time.
Dan, on the, yeah, on account 4219, has the AED equipment and training that we talked about in the streets last week, but it's showing $7,500 here. And then under account 4263, has AED training of $2,500.
Yes, and that $2,500 at this point should be taken out. This is the same reflection as the streets department. The AED equipment has not been secured yet, we've been having some problems with getting quotes. So these AEDs are brand new, supposed to be in already, they're not in yet, and this is for, different from the police department, this is for the actual building.
So the 2,500 will come out, that's a duplication?
That correct, it was supposed to be on maintenance, and again, it's not on maintenance at this time.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Can we move on to page 173? Maintenance building? Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, on the maintenance building, backup on the generator switch, page 176, over electrical work, pumping station, $15,000. It was also in last year's budget, and it's also included in the estimated actual for this year.
That is correct, we just vetted that last evening with the municipal services, meeting number one, planning on going to council Monday night, pending on the availability of the equipment, it may still be considered a carryover, so we want to make sure we reflected it for next year in the event that it will be installed after May 1st.
Okay, so it is in this year's, and it's going to be in next year's, but then it'll resolve itself as it's paid, we'll either have an underspend for last year or the current year, and then it'll be in next year or vice versa?
That is correct, I'm concerned about the transfer switch specifically, which has been electrical components that are out there that may not be available for two months, six months, again, I don't know.
Okay. And the backup, as Mike noted, is on page 176 for that. Maintenance equipment?
Yeah, I got one on that one too.
Sure.
Office fax machine, we still have a fax machine?
Yes, and that fax machine is being utilized recently, if you've noticed, up in the mailroom, we've revamped as part of the mailroom, and the new technology out in that room is also scanning, scanning of records, in which case it'll be gone, going for the next year. But the fax machine is something that we have broached, and it is still being utilized, especially by the Julie, the accounting department. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I'm sorry, you said.
Fax machine.
And for locates, is it still?
No, no, over here, the fax machine over here.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and we did talk about getting rid of it, and there was still some usage that, I believe it was Maria had, we had asked her, and she said we still would use it periodically.
Not too many places.
Not as much, yeah, not too much anymore.
In treasure court, we also use it at public works, we have a separate fax machine there, and that fax machine is a backup in the event that cable or telecommunications goes down, especially for Julie tickets.
Does it still make those funny noises when you connect to it?
Yes, like the Abacus, yes.
Do you? Do you have the occasion to have to send sensitive information over, so where a fax comes in handy versus an email, so something doesn't get, you know, captured? Like I know when, you know, Ted, you know, when we would be, you know, buyers on our contracts, they'd be getting wiring instructions, they'd be faxing instead of emailing.
Yeah, we don't have anything that will be considered confidential on our end. If it will be confidential, it will be between attorneys, not so much staff. Again, whatever we do is all FOIA subjective, so again, it's really a, you know, transparency that whether it's a fax or an email, this is one in the same, as far as I'm concerned.
I had to use a fax machine yesterday to throw out dependent care reimbursement, it was like $2.50 a page at FedEx there in Woodbrook, so better to have your own.
Any more questions on maintenance equipment?
Yeah, one last one, last week when we did the streets, that last item, the tire inflator was 3,000, and it was in streets two times for 1,500, and once here for 1,500. So did we correct it in streets and eliminate one of those, so it's in there once and here once?
Yes.
Thank you.
We had a nice little chat last week about the tire inflator, I remember that.
I just want to make sure we're only buying one.
Yeah, and I apologize, there was some confusion on my end with a tire inflator and tire changer, two separate components, two separate prices, but one was duplicated, and that's been eliminated, correct.
Abacus.
We've got, under maintenance water systems, we've got some items there with backup, 178, 179, 180, 181, 185, 186. Any questions on those items? Software? Truck rental? Postage, mailings, quality control, wrapping up page 173? Okay. Moving on to page 174, supplies, operation. Training and education, we've eliminated at $2,500 for AED training.
Right.
Telephone, uniforms, utilities, vehicle, gas and oil. Moving down to contractual services. Any questions on the rest of page 174? Moving on to page 175, capital purchases. There's several items under discretionary. Backups on page 187, 88, 89, 95, 97, 200, 205, 208. Questions on capital purchases, equipment?
I'm sorry, under the equipment, was the leak logging?
Yes.
Yes.
The cover, I'm sorry, I was looking at this, is that the cover now?
Yeah, that's the cover now, right. Page 197 is also backup for that, so if you guys want to discuss that. That was brought up at the beginning when we were looking at the summary page.
Chairperson, I can give you a summary?
Please do.
Okay. Currently, for this year's budget, we have approximately $60,000 for what's referred to as leak loggers. These leak loggers were also vetted at the municipal services meeting last night to be forwarded to city council for consideration this Monday. It basically includes approximately 52 leak loggers. In summary, what these things do is they're actually devices that get put into valve vaults, okay, larger valve vaults and or auxiliary, auxiliary boxes. Auxiliary boxes are also in place of valve vaults to turn on, to turn water off and on. These are the larger main valves. With that said, what will happen is, let's just take two points, point A and point B, approximately 4, let's just say for simplicity, 500 feet apart. Between that 500 feet, you have logger one, logger two, and what it does is it detects sound. As the sound, as a water main breaks, as a water main break occurs, the sound amplifies through the actual pipe, the leak loggers, then through an iCloud system, basically to say, to the iCloud, or to the, with the software integrated, says, hey, I've got this louder noise than I typically do, there's some activity going on here, it's starting to leak. That leak basically could be maybe just a small pinhole at this point, or it could be a half a crack or a full crack. What this all boils down to is wholesale cost of water that we lose. That water that we lose, it basically equates to dollars. So I did a, and you'll see this coming up Monday evening, is there's an ROI. Based on that ROI, and based on the full city system, which is approximately going to cost $616,000 in total, there will be, I believe it's $300,000 budgeted for the following year and the year after. With that said, the payoff itself is about 2.5 years total on water loss at a wholesale cost. And that's the portion that was not carried in through the following, the subsequent years here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood, I thought it was 600 total over three years, 200 a year.
Yes.
You said 200 plus 300 plus 300.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
200.
Yes. Yeah, 200 over three, I'm going to, the payoff is 2.5 years, the program is three years. If we see that, you know, we may still come back at the end of the second year and say, hey, let's do it now, just because we see what the value of this is. But the bottom line is that the system would pay for it itself within 2.5 years based on the wholesale cost and based on the water loss.
Let me back up one more, Monday night, you said we're going to see a proposal for 50 of them?
Yeah, 50, 52 or 58, I don't recall.
But we need like 800, so you're just asking for just a small portion of it this point?
Correct, yeah, we need a total of, I think it was 600, yes, 600.
So why are we, but you said we're only approving 50 on Monday?
58, number one, the reasoning behind that was for staff to get familiar with a quadrant of how the system works, how the training is implemented. We have vetted the entire process by, Elmhurst was a prime example of this product, that we've been looking at this probably for two years. And in addition, the cost savings will be, if you recall, we have a leak locating service that comes in every year for approximately $15,000. The bottom line is that we can do it better and more, you know, instantly, instead of waiting once a year to have this program in, and, you know, is the vendor a dependable vendor at the end of the day?
The smaller amount is in this year's budget, so that, what Dan said, but was part of his plan also.
The price is locked in for all of them.
Yes.
Yeah, but your, the memo is also saying we have 50 of them already.
No, we're going to be getting those 50.
Well, your request form says, based on the trial set of 50 plus loggers that we purchased, we believe that we will see very positive results.
We get Tuesday and it'll make sense.
Yeah. Yeah, we're a little bit ahead of it.
That's where Elmhurst, so you've talked, been dealing.
Yeah, there's been, it's been going on for a year and a half, and I thought we would have had it by now, but there was some, you know, again, further clarification with our staff to.
So you're anticipating you'll have very positive results after Monday night?
Yes.
Also because of the batteries too, because the eight years on the batteries, you didn't want to, you didn't want to have them all at one shot.
Correct, some reoccurring costs, so we spread that out as well, you know, the only, and again, with the amount that we're getting, we need some, you know, are those leaks going to occur where we set them up? I don't know, you know, we need 600 of them, we're going to set them in a quadrants, probably the most active quadrant that we have. Murphy's Law always says it'll be outside that quadrant, and it'll be a larger main break. But, you know, I think it's a, it's a very good system, and especially from a restoration standpoint, I mean, you get a bad water main break, it's not uncommon to have a 20, $30,000 restoration cost.
And how do you find water main breaks now, Dan? Watch the water run on the street pretty much?
We get a call at 2 o'clock in the morning, my yard's flooding, my basement's ready to flood, so on and so forth.
Tom?
Quick question on a generator for a pump station, isn't water gravity fed? So is it just for valves, electricity, or is there actually pumps pumping it through? Because usually you have the tower and you have gravity feeding.
Right, and with that gravity, you have a certain height. That height is approximately, I want to say 140, so that all, 140, and that equates all back to then pressure, pressure is approximately 8.3, that's a gallon of water, a gallon of water is 8.34 pounds, the pressure, I believe is 2.2, 2. something, I just can't recall that. But when you set a height, our static pressure is approximately 50 to 60 pounds. Now, as the elevation changes on grades, for example, let's say. Now, as the elevation changes on grades, for example, let's say Farmingdale. When I say Farmingdale, the furthest, the southwest end of town. That water, we need to, we want to maintain it at a bare minimal of 45 to 50 pounds. So during a summer, and I'll just refer to a summer, 100-degree day, you have water that's being used for irrigation, so on and so forth, and that water pressure can drop down drastically, or a fire, or a bad water main break. So in that particular sense, then we need pressure. We have several different pumps. We have four pumps at our Plainfield Station and adjacent to Home Depot. I believe we have either two or one, I don't recall that.
Okay.
But that's, you know, and especially at the Home Depot, it's a pumping station that's outside of, if you've noticed, between Home Depot and Friday Coop, that's a shared pumping station. Downers Grove and us have pumps in there. It's also a feed line from DuPage Water Commission. So DuPage Water Commission only pumps, I believe it's approximately, their incoming pressure is 60 pounds, but that 60 pounds is against, you have a friction loss based on where it's going to in the actual tanks.
Gotcha, okay.
Want to hear about friction loss?
I think we're good, Dan, we're good. Thank you, Tom, are you good with the answer?
Yeah, yeah, it was just backup on the pressures.
We actually understood it.
You had Tom at yes, but it was a good explanation.
All right. As long as I flush my toilet, it flushes. That's the important thing in my house. Okay. Any other questions on this equipment line item? This, we'll call them loggers, that we're going to refer to this as the loggers? Leak loggers?
Leak loggers, yes.
Anyone else? Water meters, transfer, and debt retirement. Any questions on those lines? As it relates to the water fund budget?
Chair, when I have one comment, and this has been done annually, we could see the two water bonds that are allocated in this budget and covered by the water rates. Therefore, at the next council meeting, there'll be two property, two tax abatements, one for each, one for the 2012 bond and one for the 2018 bond. And that 2012 bond's getting pretty close to the fiscal year ending '26. That will be paid off.
Okay, great. Any question on those items? Further questions? Any questions overall on the water fund budget summary? Okay. We will, a second, let me keep my pages in order here. Okay, Dan, anything else on that? We can move on then to Water Depreciation Fund?
No, nothing else at this point.
Okay. So page 210, Water Depreciation Fund.
I have a comment on that one, just more for Brian's information. Under Equipment, Brian, the fiscal '23 estimated year-to-date 262. We're already at 311 through February 28th. So that numbers needs to be adjusted.
Thank you.
Mike, could you just repeat that real quick?
Under Equipment, it's showing the estimated actual at 262,000.
Yes.
And through February 28th, we're at 311,000.
Okay.
We'll have to kick that up probably 40, 50,000.
So that needs to be adjusted, okay? Pages 211, 212, and 213 as backup for the Water Depreciation Fund budget. Equipment, capital improvement, infrastructure. There's really not much there, but I mean.
I'm sorry, one point, there are, it looks like three or four here that we have listed. Probably a couple of years ago, Dan had talked about a number of, I'll call smaller projects, but water main looping. And we're looking at those projects, but have not identified a funding source for those yet. And if those are done, and when they are done, and revenues available will be reviewed, probably ongoing annually.
Okay. So I see them listed, but there's nothing, no dollars associated with them.
It's to allocate, so everybody's aware that those.
They're on the list, the hit list, but they just haven't happened.
More of a capital projects list for the water fund, yes.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything to add for Water Depreciation Fund budget?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So that's that on the two water funds. Next up, we're going to revisit the costs associated for council members to attend the IML conference in September. This was discussed last week about putting additional funds into that budget line item that right now is just $1,000 total. The allocation is for $100 per elected official. And the conversation went that just to attend the IML conference, it costs, where's that sheet? Like $350 a person, right, Brian?
Yes.
You want to go start talking about that?
Well, yeah, it's just a continuation of the discussion last week. I think the city council left off really unsure at what, which of the elected officials might have training, which might not. We talked about sometimes it's pretty difficult if, for an elected official, you might get a number of training opportunities or flyers that come through your, through your computer. You don't know which ones are actually pretty good or vetted. The IML conference has been, you know, a solid conference for many, many years, attended by many elected officials throughout the state. And in the conversation, it evolved to where that is probably the best training session for an elected official, and that one that we have vetted and know about.
And another one that was discussed was like for our new council members, like that new training, Eric and I had attended it a couple of years ago. We thought that was very helpful.
Yeah, that was, you two both enjoyed that. And I believe typically the Illinois Municipal League has a similar session at their tour, at their conference. I think the one you went to might have been outside of the three-day conference, but probably in IML still.
Right, it was, it was a one-day event, yes. And then Joanne brought up the point of, for her role, there's, her associations or her events, you know, are better served outside of IML, so.
Yeah, I'm looking at that request separately, if, you know, whatever dollar amount, if that's the amount, it really doesn't matter how Joanne might choose to use that because as she's in the professional organization, she is familiar with more seminars and activities that might come through her association. Right, Joanne?
Correct. So what would be your proposition in terms of adjusting the budget?
From my perspective, and this has been talked about for years, I think training for the elected officials is really important. And I don't know any reason why the city should not cover those costs of, you know, $350 for the training session. For some of you, it might mean taking a day off of work if it's the Friday session. But again, that was debated years ago, and it was only at $100. So I think this reflects, I would include it in the budget for the elected officials. Now, if somebody said, you know what, I really don't want to go, I know I won't go, we'd like that information because we would adjust it for, for the elected officials that think they might go or tendively, you know, might go.
So you would increase it from $100 to $350 per person?
That's what I would do, but again, it's, that's up to the council in terms of, you know, what you want to allocate and what expense you want to incur.
How does everyone feel about that? In the meantime, you and Eric, you were here last week, we discussed this quite a bit.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, again, we won't know if anyone uses it, but let's be prepared for everyone to use it.
I think to understand the value of IML, you have to go to IML. I'm pretty familiar with Brad Cole on IML and what's offered. And for me, it's a value, it's educational, even with the years I have. I think it would be especially valuable for those of you who haven't been on the council for a long time. I think, you know, like Mary's on the Legislative Committee for DMMC. I'm sure when she attends those meetings, and Joanne attends those meetings, you learn things just by attending the meetings. IML is a whole weekend of that. So I think there's a value there. You know, it's a personal decision. You do have to take time off of work. I think it's a Thursday, Friday, and a Saturday.
Yeah, Thursday through Saturday. They do have a one-day rate too.
You could do a one day, you could do, it's like a Thursday evening, and then all day Friday and Saturday. There's good presentations, you choose what you go to. You know, it's up to the individual. I'm going to, I'm going to go this year.
Any heard the discussion on this?
No, I mean, we should, we should plan for it and see what happens, I mean.
Yeah, I think putting the money in there in the budget is good. If, I think the best way to see whether or not people are going to go is just to see what happens this year when.
And the dates for this year are September 21 to 23, and it is in downtown Chicago, so it's something you could commute to.
It is, it's probably one of the best training conferences for municipal people.
I don't know, again, if the council, you know, really was debating that. It's just a matter of the dollar amount, really.
Right, right, right. So if, I think unless there's, I think the consensus is to make that modification.
Yeah, that's what it seems.
Okay.
How much more do you, are we getting that as opposed to the monthly IML magazines that we get in our mailboxes?
That's, that's a membership fee. We, I think we pay, what, 1,500?
Maybe 1,100, I believe, for that membership into IML. The elected officials, again, now have 100. So this is, you know, the increase would be, would be 250 for elected officials because there is already 100 annually allocated.
Walking through a house, we're still looking at the brochure, right? That's what you're thinking.
That's what I thought.
Well, I think there's also an advantage of networking too with other elected officials when you're in.
I'm trying to think on both, on both sides, right?
Yeah.
I got it, I'll increase that, yes.
Okay. Next item on the ticker is the, we had a discussion on electric vehicles, and we took like a straw poll. I did feel, after talking with Brian and Mayor Marques, that we should, because two people weren't here, bring it up again and discuss it briefly as it relates to, you know, we talked about, well, maybe you want to, or Dan? I mean, it was about do an early replacement of two admin vehicles for municipal services to potentially secure hybrid vehicles.
Yes, it's for two vehicles. We earmarked that in the three-year budget that you see now, but I believe it was the third year out. And that was, that was estimated based on when two of the current administrative vehicles would, there would end the useful life of the vehicles. And then, so that was planned out. And again, Dan brought it up last week, and Dan and the mayor had talked about some benefits of buying it, buying it, you know, buying it early and moving it up. And I have the benefit, you know, I talked about the other side of that, of why replacing cars before our schedule says they should be replaced. And that's where we left off. And again, we had options of buy none, buy one, or buy two.
You know, just to add to that, we are part of the EV readiness cohort through Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We have talked about setting, being role models for the community. We would like to see our shopping centers add charging stations, similar to some that you've saw over by Kohl's and over by the promenade over there. We're going to have two superchargers, Dan, installed?
Yes, we will have chargers level two or level three, more than likely level three chargers, and I'm still waiting on attorney.
These cars that Dan's talking about would be electric slash hybrid. These wouldn't be all electric, these would be, you're seeing fewer manufacturers making hybrids and more moving towards hybrid slash electric. I, to justify it is to say that we feel that the city, if the city's going to promote a changeover to a more green fleet, purchasing these cars is the way of showing the community how important that is. I sent all of you an article on, what was it, Dan? I think it was called How to Create a Greening Fleet.
There are several articles that, you know, I know that we've broached, and being part of this cohort, I can't recall which articles which anymore, to be honest.
I mean, Dan attends a Zoom meeting probably once a week with the cohort that he's taken on that responsibility. So we're really into, we're really into this movement. And I really believe in it. I believe purchasing two vehicles this year would be optimal, but it's your call.
I guess I'll take the other side of that, though. We spent a lot of time years ago coming up with a status report for our fleet when it should be replaced. I'm not talking about dump trucks or anything like that. That's a service to the community. Here, we're talking about two administrative vehicles. And to accelerate our purchase and spend the money, taxpayers' money now, I don't disagree with you. I think in the long run, something's going to happen, whether it's hybrid, whether it's electric. I don't think any of us exactly know where it's going to go, but why change our parameters just for the sake of looking good?
And that's the sole question, and that's why, you know, we had this discussion. It wasn't about if the program's good or not, but it's exactly what you said, Mike, and I had taken that position, and here it is for discussion.
How often are both administrative vehicles on the street at the same time?
I'm sorry, Joe.
How often are two administrative vehicles on the street functioning at the same time?
It's Dan and Brian's.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, those are on the replacements.
I mean, yeah, and probably more so mobile than Brian.
Right.
I think be a fair statement. But, you know, in the event of some unforeseens, they would both be utilized. Again, when is that unforeseen going to happen? Whether it's a tornado, or, you know, we have some, you know, heavy rains, heavy rains that require additional, you know, where a vehicle just can't get through certain areas, tornadoes. God, we've, you know, we've experienced that in the past, bad storm events, even winters, blizzards. I mean, I've gone and picked up people out of town on severe snow events when everything else was closed down.
With the police.
Aren't you using these vehicles every day?
Yes, 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 the answer is yes.
Every day and in the evening.
Yeah.
I was just giving you more specific examples, yes.
Right, but what's the, like, based on the parameters that have been established for many years, what's the predicted expiration date on these vehicles? Two years, one year?
My truck is probably two years at best.
Both of them are in the third year of this three-year budget, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Dan?
26, I thought you said.
Mine may be a one year earlier.
I thought fiscal year 26 is what I thought.
And, yeah, I'm not looking at anything right now, just going by memory.
Okay, yeah.
His vehicle looks better than yours, though.
One quick question, but there is a $7,500 federal tax rebate and a $4,000 Illinois rebate. So then you're getting a really good cheaper card than you're earning out there.
Municipality, municipality was not eligible.
There are no incentives for municipalities to go green?
It's.
Federal incentives?
It's very limited, and again, they're changing, whether it's ComEd providing some type of rebates, whether it's the EPA providing some rebates. And there's one more organization, plus some of the co-ops that we belong to. The suburban co-op is another one, but they don't have everything put together yet as far as the hybrids. And again, the hybrids that we're looking at is gasoline plug-in, okay? It's not the conventional gasoline, electric powered on its own. And the part of the reasoning, to Chief's point, is to be able to come back and say, hey, you know what, these are really a good value. You know, is, are we going to have days where electric's not available for a week, for example? We've seen that before, so we have to back up with the gasoline. We also have the opportunity to look at these vehicles during severe winters. Okay, will the batteries on these vehicles last? And how long will they last during a, you know, a polar vortex spell? We've seen polar vortexes that have lasted for 30 days, you know.
That's another argument, why do we want to be the guinea pig?
Well, again, at what point are you not the guinea pig? And at what point will they get better? The batteries are better now than they were four years ago. The batteries are better now than they were four years ago. Um, are they gonna get better in two more years? I don't know. You know, technology keeps on evolving. Where do you start? Where do you stop? And again, you know, my, my avenue on this was that being part of cohort, starting to, we're developing the policy basically for DuPage County. There's certain towns that are maybe one step ahead, Schaumburg, for example. So, again, this is just part of it. Out of, you know, it's no different in the solar, how we went solar years ago. We got recognized and the permitting processes, and I, I'm, I'm digressing now, but again, this is all part of the equation.
Ted?
Yeah, guys, I said this last week, and I'm gonna say it again. Um, one of the reasons why I said just doing one vehicle is kind of, uh, we're kind of in a catch-twenty-two. We are basically needing to replace vehicles that are two years out, and yes, we should hold off on it. But as I've stated before, trying to get vehicles right now is a real pain. With that said, if we do one vehicle, where it's gonna happen is it's gonna be more like a test vehicle to see what we can do long-term with it. And that's the reason why I proposed it. I, if it was up to me and we had plenty of vehicles around, I'd tell you, forget electric and go gas because they're not proven. But at the same time, this might just satisfy everything, having one vehicle, seeing how it tests on out for the city, which is very important because we don't know where it's gonna go with. It's also gonna turn around and satisfy one car that we may not be able to get in a couple of years. And it may also satisfy the situation being green, but like I said, that's why I proposed one vehicle.
You know, Ted, I, you, you make a lot of sense with what you said. I'm sitting here listening, and I thought to myself, you do, if you get one car this year, you, you see how that car operates, and it may, it may lead you to have a better model the following years. If you buy two, you're buying two of the same.
Right.
If you buy one this year, you see how it operates, you see the, the faults with it or the advantages with it, and it makes you a smarter consumer down the line. Whether you wait another year or another two years, you have an opportunity to wait, uh, to measure the value of the one car.
It's kinda what I was leaning to when I asked about how often are the, are the two administrative cars out on the street? They could, you can, you know, get by with one for now, and to your point, it's so, the, the wait to get, you know, cars is, is so long.
We're still gonna have the other vehicle, though. Each person needs their own vehicle. They're not gonna share it.
No, I, I understand it, but it's, but it's, it's, you're, you're breaking, breaking, breaking it in.
Right, I, I get that.
Well, I, I, you know, if we went with one vehicle this year, I'd say Brian keeps his vehicle, Dan, because Dan puts the heavy miles on. And I think that's the best way to get an idea of how well it services us is by having you drive the one vehicle.
And then is the, the person who, that vehicle goes home with them, correct?
That is correct.
So then it's up to them to install a charger at their own house, or is the city doing that, too?
No, and, and that's the beauty of it. You know, part of, uh, the cohort, and again, the cohort, is we've been evaluating this, all these opportunities, if you wanna say, how do you charge a vehicle at home? You could charge a vehicle at home with your typical one-twenty outlets, okay? It should be a dedicated service per the guidelines that we had set forth. It's no different than plugging in a toaster.
Right.
And.
I own a hybrid, so I'm all versed on it.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I just wanted to kind of explain it. So, you know, is there any additional cost to the city for me to plug this in in the evening? The answer is no.
But the city should pay for that extra electricity you have at home.
Again.
That could add up dramatically.
Again, you know, and.
Difference in your bill.
What is that cost? You know, is it, is a trickle charge? I get that. You know, am I in this to, you know, oh, city, you owe me, uh, X amount of dollars? No, again, I'm, I'm, that's not even a, a thought process, uh, where I'm looking at, so.
You could also bring it here and charge it at the state.
That, that's true. You know, I can, I mean, again, the chargers that we're hopefully gonna get sooner than later, you know, but then again, I don't wanna book my car.
Right, but I also think the city should evaluate not just necessarily putting them at City Hall. Where would they be most used by the population of the city of Darien?
We're currently working with.
Yeah, and I'm not sure City Hall is necessarily the right location.
Well, City Hall was for two reasons. Number one is the level-three chargers were for the patrons that come and visit City Hall. Now, are they, will they be, it's no different than, okay, I'm gonna go fill up, uh, I, I need to get, I wanna put a quarter tank of gasoline in for whatever reason. We're gonna have some discounting, too, because we're not gonna be taking the bonuses, if you wanna say, with this, uh, um, turnkey operation. So resident comes in, say he's here for half an hour, or they're here for a half an hour, twenty minutes. Is it worth for them to fill up, you know, and what does that fill up mean? Uh, a typical level-three will charge up to a full charge up at forty, about forty minutes. So that's why I'm going with the level threes. This way, you know, twenty minutes, that's half a tank. What does a half a tank equal in kilowatt-hours? I don't, I, you know, I, I don't have that memorized or calculated yet at this point. But part of it was that the patrons have the opportunity to come here, and I would put them right in front to promote that. In conjunction with that, I believe the mayor said it earlier, uh, we're working with, uh, Brooke Haven to have him install also, uh, whether it's three, four, and, and start promoting it that way as well.
So is there any more questions on the vehicles? Because we, last week we did a zero, one, two.
What, what were, I'm trying to look for, what were the vehicles we were purchasing?
Was a Cherokee was, uh, the best, the optimal choice that is available today. Again, when I say available today, it still might be three, four months out, uh, at best. And, uh, it, it seemed to be the best dollar value currently in place.
And, and why do we get a C Vs?
Number one is for inclement weather, more so during emergency situations that will occur, whereas your typical smaller vehicles will not have that opportunity to, um, you know, be utilized to the fullest extent. Again, I think, you know, whether it's a tornado, uh, that the breeze on the roadway, um, a significant storm event.
Is, I apologize for interrupting. Is a Cherokee? I, I don't know Jeep vehicles size-wise.
It's a smaller SUV is what.
It is a smaller one. So is it more of like a RAV four or a C R V, or is it more bigger than that?
Along the lines of an, um, a RAV.
Okay. All right, so it is a smaller one, because I'm trying to think why we would need larger S V's.
No, it's not a Navigator. It's not a full-size, uh, Expedition X L T, for example, or Navigator, I think, is another one. So, yeah, it's not.
And what's the incremental cost over a regular gasoline vehicle?
Really, it's, it's probably some savings on gasoline. I think it really, at the end of the day, it's, it almost balances out.
And you'll trade in the current vehicle?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's some value to that as well. Yeah, sort of some R O I, you know, what the full R O I is. I did not evaluate that.
Okay.
I just got another question. It's sort of off the topic, but these chargers that we're talking about putting in the parking lot there, does that present any challenges for snowplows and things like that for the people taking care of the maintenance?
Glad you asked that question, Mike, because that's part of cohort, which is coming up again. We're having a Zoom meeting on that Tuesday. But I believe it's Tu, uh, what, next week, or whatever the case is. But that's something we're looking at, these chargers, how they're installed. There's a standard that's gonna be implemented, and part of that standard is already implemented. You know, when you go to a gas station, for example, you see how those hoses are all up on those retractable reels. It's gonna be along the same concept. So, and as far as the actual units themselves, the units are protected by ballards, basically no different than what you see at a gas station. So it's, you know, the best analogy, the comparison I could use is what you see at a gas station is what you'll see basically at a setup on a commercial application.
Dan, I, I'm sorry, you probably mentioned it, but these will be privately owned, or they will be, we won't necessarily own those, correct?
Correct. It'll be an outsourced, uh, no cost to us. It's all neutral. And turnkey operation. And, uh, really, that's, I mean, that's just the, the nuts and bolts of it.
But you have to pay to charge?
Yes, they'll be in.
Yeah, so you have, you usually have an app where you, yeah, you activate the charge on an app on your phone, and then you plug in.
Correct, yes.
And, Mary, I just double-checked. They, both, both of those are scheduled in the three-year in the, uh, budget in twenty-sixth, the third year.
Okay. So should we go back to our, our straw man poll like we did last week? The zero, one, two? I don't remember. I think Lester said one last week.
Lester said one.
Okay. Okay, so do you, how many people are in favor of purchasing zero vehicles in the fiscal year twenty-four budget? Zero. How many in favor of one? How many in favor of two? Okay, so it looks like one.
Tie, Dan.
It's a private show.
Yes, yes.
Brian and I have this little debates, if you wanna say it.
I said none, Dan said two, so it's one. It's a tie.
Okay, one it is.
Last week he was telling Dan he won, though, because.
Well, that's sure kinda, last week it kinda was a tie, 'cause.
It wasn't.
There was, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's internal, uh.
Unofficial tie.
Internal combustion, internal.
Okay, so that's, um, that conversation. Okay, moving on to something that was not in the budget that needs to be discussed is the, um, backup and the discussion for the marquee signage at seventy-seven O-two Cass Avenue, the southwest corner of Cass and Plainfield Road. This was not included in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. A memorandum was issued, um, with backup for the marquee sign, costs associated for council members. Okay, that's, yeah, that was you. Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
Yes, no, you go ahead.
Just a little background. This, this current fiscal year, it came up mid-fiscal year, and Dan saw an opportunity to, you know, make some improvements, again, at the Cass and, uh, and Plainfield intersection. There was direction, Dan did receive direction to, to at least work out this deal, and it's a three-party deal. It's, it's, it's pretty complicated. But I think Dan has made really, really good progress, but we didn't have the money in this year. But, uh, because there was direction from the council, we felt that we should obviously, uh, discuss this again, but then allocate that money in the budget.
Where I thought we left it, though, was Dan was supposed to go back and give alternatives, because I brought up the fact, do we want another water feature? And I think there was some discussion of that, because that adds fifty thousand dollars to the cost.
I think that's really step three. Dan has to get in agreement with the owners, the actual, what it will look like, Dan.
And I could provide the update if you'd like.
Would be, you'll have a better idea what it looks like and, and what you're, what, you know, what you're thinking of once you have the easement agreement, once you have the three-party agreement. Is that right? You probably have ideas now, but you don't know exactly how that would look on paper yet.
Correct. I mean, part of that is correct. It's just more of it got solidified this morning, so if I may take a step back, I can kinda summarize where we're at. I also updated our committee, uh, last evening in respect to this. Chair, Chairperson.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so obviously going back to November of twenty-twenty-two, this thought process came in to enhance that corner. That enhancement basically included, uh, several components. First of all, would be a lease agreement, a landscape agreement, construction easements, maintenance, and, and variation to the actual sign code. So obviously, uh, what the goal was here to take the original footprint of what the, uh, corner had in the past and basically, um, modify that, modify that by adding marquees on the upper portion of these panels. In addition to, we just received renderings, uh, this morning, um, that incorporates the triangle shape, and on each triangle, there would be a two-foot by two-foot, uh, type of brick pillar, I'll refer to it as, for simple terminology, with a capstone on top. That item would be approximately, it'd be two-foot by two-foot, and the height, uh, the height of it would be approximately ten-foot, ten-foot-five. That would encapsulate the entire signage for that proposed area. We just received yesterday the sign easement agreement, uh, I'll call it a tentatively approved sign easement agreement, which is gonna go back to the owners for their signature. Uh, I was gonna bring it to City Council Monday evening, but we're gonna wait for the signatures to come from the representatives of that, uh, property, so we could have everything in that proportion solidified. What I'm currently working on now is the costs, individual costs. Those individual costs are for the marquee, uh, screens, three of them. That's still approximately forty-five thousand. I'm waiting for confirmation on the actual pricing for all this. Landscaping, landscaping refers to hardscaping, which is a block wall, retaining wall, approximately eighteen inches to two foot in height at the base. So it elevates, uh, you know, and there's some elevation to it. Incorporating with that also is those three brick pillars that I just spoke of, and, and combination with that. There's some water feature to that. That water feature was part of where water would be coming out of the brick pillars and running down. There might be one, might be one or two more in the actual retaining walls. I'm not sure of that entire design yet, uh, but yes, there's, I'm waiting for that cost to be coming in, uh, hopefully by Wednesday, Thursday. Also, yeah, there's some internal cost, the water line, irrigation, uh, lines for the landscaping. You know, if we're gonna put landscaping in there, we have to keep the water. It, it's not just public server, municipal services going out there with the water truck and hitting it. It needs to be a little more automated, just as well as Seventy-Fifth Street is now currently, and, uh, uh, part of it across the street. Plantings, a lot of plantings, a lot of colors in there. I'm waiting for the, uh, I'll call, whether they're perennials or annuals. I'm not a green thumb, but the bottom line is that we wanna be able to make sure that we have colors out there. And, and again, some of the spacing is tight. Still, you can make things very nice with plants and, uh, whether it's tall grasses or petunias, as far as I'm concerned, but, uh, um, anyway, and there's some miscellaneous. So there's a combination of forces there, including the sign, um, the sign company itself, who needs to, they're gonna, they're looking at the modification of, originally, we're gonna use the single, uh, the existing base and build off that base. And, and having several conversations, it may not be worth having that existing base where we have the ability to attach to these three pillars versus trying to, um, modify something that's sort of antiquated already. Either way, we have to put a footing in if we move forward with these pillars. Regardless of the water feature, the water feature could be pulled out at any time, to your point, Mike. And that could be a last-minute decision. That could be when it's presented to the City Council as what each component will cost. So I, I don't have those cost solid effects. There's too many moving parts, and again, just the agreement. The sign easement agreement took several, several months, actually, since November that we've been working on it. So it's finally at a point where it's ready to be ratified.
As part of that agreement, wasn't the landlord, didn't they receive like twenty or thirty thousand of insurance? Would they be contributing that as part of the agreement?
The answer is no. The only thing they're gonna be contributing is a one-time, uh, landscape contribution of fifteen hundred dollars. That's it.
But they did receive insurance proceeds. I thought you mentioned before there was twenty thousand or something.
Yeah, it's still costing them additional monies above that twenty thousand, whatever it is. Again, so maybe it's, uh, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand.
What's, what are they spending the money on? The temporary?
The, the actual sign. We're not paying for any portion.
Dan's costs are our costs, or what he has here is over and above what they're putting in.
Right, yeah, their cost is not.
So what they have right now, is that temporary? Because they put up signs?
Yes, they, it's temporary, and we gave them permission to put, uh, whatever it was, two months ago, so people can identify who's there, what's there, so on, so forth.
And Dan, when you bring the agreement to the council, um, well, you, you'll have all, you'll have options for the council to pick, or is that step two, once the agreement's done?
Once the agreement's done, it'll be step two, because I wanna put the agreement, uh, actually, I might even do them all together, uh, just by time.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't know if the agreement locked us into something, so if we have an agreement with the owners that binds us to something, then you would, we should bring. an agreement with the owners that binds us to something, then you would, we should bring it all at once.
Yeah, the, and the answer is it doesn't bind us to anything. That would be in the agreement. If the city council says tomorrow, you know what, we're not going to do this. Okay, sorry for the inconvenience. City is backing out of this. There's clauses in there for backup clauses and so on and so forth.
But just to clarify, they're going to be spending their twenty thousand dollars, just say, on a sign with or without us.
Correct, twenty to thirty thousand.
So we're looking to enhance it with the brick pillars and the marquee on top and potentially a water feature and some upscale landscaping. That's what you're proposing.
That is correct, yes.
Dan, does the, would the retaining wall keep another car from driving into that sign?
No.
No.
Nor would that meet standards.
And again, the, the chances of that happening, I mean, it was an anomaly and unfortunately it was somebody that literally kind of passed out or medical condition, whatever the case was. So that could happen at any given point, at any given time, at any given location.
More discussion on the sign.
So who, who's choosing the advertisements that are going in it?
You guys will. And again, the advertising, the way I've currently presented it is that the corner property and only the corner property, if we put the marquee on, will have the opportunity to advertise their businesses internally there on the marquee at no cost. If the city council decides to take on additional advertising for Darian businesses, the city council will have that opportunity. Besides, the information that we're going to be putting on there is going to be done by a third party. That third party is referred to as the media, media coordinator, marketing animation coordinator, which will be, and I don't have the cost, I want to say it's about five hundred to, I'll call it a thousand dollars for all intensive purposes for a year. So again, city council will have the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to open up advertising to Darian businesses at a cost or no cost, whatever the case is.
But Dan, that marquee would say city council, seven thirty, Monday, March fifth, they'll have stuff like that.
Correct. I'll refer to it as village business and or emergencies, call it amber alerts, whatever the case is.
So is the agreement going to structure how much of its advertising and how much is city controlled?
It's all city controlled and obviously the timing.
Except for the businesses there. I mean, if every business wants to get involved in there, that's going to take up a lot of, I, I don't know. That's why I'm saying, is it for every one business that we get two signs showing up? I mean, how long are they going to show up? I mean, there's a lot of moving parts on that, it seems.
You know, from what we've have experienced in the past with Chicago billboards, there's plenty of room for that. When I say room, I mean time. You know, that segment's going to be whoever's there, let's call it the doctor's office. You know, are they going to advertise? If they do advertise, maybe it's vaccine specials.
Dan, are they guaranteed X amount of time?
Oh, there's no guarantee on time. The timing is still open.
Because there's roughly what, twelve businesses or so in there, ballparking it? That's how many I picture on that old sign. I don't know.
Yeah, it was.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't every business, if it's free, want to be on there? And I, I just want to know what their expectations are of what they're going to be getting out of this.
And, you know, a lot of them are appointments for, there's some medical.
Well, I mean, I know.
There's a chiropractor, Mike Overman's in there, he's an attorney.
Edward Jones, James Burke's in there.
Edward Jones, sure. I would expect Edward Jones to be on there, you know.
But Dan, we will decide. So we might give that building two hours a day as an example and that's in the agreement.
We control.
And that's my question. Are we agreeing on those things now? I don't want to have a fight in a year from now about we didn't get enough time. We didn't, no, we're not getting what we thought we were going to get.
No, and I'll double check that, but from what I recall, we control the timing, we control the content through our third party. Even the, if they want to advertise on it, they have to go back through us and they would, you know, we would initiate that with our vendor then.
And so when you talk about future ongoing expenses of three fifty to four hundred a month, forty two hundred to forty eight hundred a year, about content creation and management, you say management, they're going to be in charge of, in the, to the extent Dunkin' Donuts wants to run a sign, is that management company going to be the one entering into an agreement with Dunkin' Donuts for them to pay to be on that or how is that going to work?
That's some of the details, you know, are, how are we going to do that? I think that's a whole nother avenue that we're going to be broaching. You know, are we going to give businesses?
But Dan, it is our sign, so if we wanted to sell advertising to Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
That was us, right.
That's what I mean. Is that covered in, I, I'm not sure what the content creation and management of five thousand a year covers.
That's right now for city business to make sure there's animation, call it animation and schedules. Those schedules.
Okay.
Are going to be municipal.
It doesn't cover outsourcing advertising.
No, no, and that cost I figured will be a pass through cost if the city council decides.
Would the entity that we're going to use be able to do that at an additional fee?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, when you think about it, how much messaging would we provide? You know, meeting times, things like that.
It seems to me that we would probably be open minded to advertising and charging for advertising because I can't see us dominating that sign twenty something hours a day.
Correct, and I think that's, that's the lesson that I am, that's the lesson that I had learned from when Chicago billboards came in and more or less got educated on, you know, what the typical runtime is, thirty seconds, a minute. It's a lot of time for thirty seconds or a minute.
What would also be helpful, do you have information like from Chicago signs, how much they charge for a minute or two minutes? So we have an idea of what we can charge.
Did not broach that yet for the simple reason that, you know, there was no decision on that. Plus, I'm still working on the infrastructure and all the lid logistics that are involved with that. That's, and I understand that's part of the equation.
Tom is getting it. You got to be careful because as you're having an agreement, you want to make sure that agreement doesn't say that building gets a hundred percent of the time on that board and then we lose out on everything. We've got the cost and none of the potential benefit. That, I think that's what he's getting at.
And I understand, right. Well, while we have the control for the content, number one, I think it's the timing and, and that's a good point, you know, to make sure.
We have to have a constraint on what their free, their, their people that are there, how much they get to use it. I think that has to be part of any agreement we do right in the beginning so that there's not something down the road saying, well, I want it to run every hour, you know, or every whatever. And you said we could and you said it was free. So just covering our butts and, and making sure that.
And that's a good point. And again, you know, I'd have to double check to see where that language is exactly in there or we may have to modify it. That, you know, each business has the opportunity to, what's, what's normal, I guess, or what's, you know, is one minute per business per day for twelve businesses that let's say, you know, does that make sense? So I, I think we have, you're right. I think we have.
I think it could be more than if they, if they have thirty seconds once an hour, I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Because that's six minutes of sixty minutes for twelve businesses.
And I agree, I mean.
So if we had an agreement, something like that, they get thirty seconds per hour for each unit in there, that seems very reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair game question. Let me follow up on that and maybe, you know, maybe I'm going to have to hold back that agreement to make sure that we broach that and, you know, it really wasn't a thought process, if you want to say.
Who's going to get that coveted two AM advertising time? There'll be some times that aren't really great on there.
Right, and we may have, we may be coming up for a variation. We have to go for a variation on that. We may require that sign to be off.
Yeah.
Eleven o'clock. What's the, what's the bank, what's the bank?
I don't recall. I know that they were.
I know Chuck's and, and dermatology people, it had to be.
Yeah, I don't believe there was a time limit on it if I'm mistaken, but I think they volunteered, the bank voluntarily from what I recall.
Was the bank eleven o'clock in, like ten or eleven o'clock at night?
I think they voluntarily said that they will be turning it off at whatever the time was and I don't recall specifics on that. But that's a whole sign, that'll be for the sign variation and yes, we'll look at all those examples or.
A lot of people work night shifts.
So at this juncture, what are you looking to put in the budget? I mean, because obviously this is still a work in progress.
I'm still at a hundred and sixty thousand.
Which is the same amount Dan mentioned when the council gave directions. So that has not increased at this point.
Discussion on that number. Further discussion on the sign.
Well, as best I can tell, that's the max. In the event we decide we don't want a water feature, it's going to be a hundred and ten thousand. So, or a hundred and twenty.
Whatever, yeah.
Forty, forty less.
You don't want landscaping, you don't want water irrigation as for the plants, so on and so forth.
So when he's asking for funds today to be bookmarked for lack of a better term in the budget, it's a max that we, we do everything that he has proposed and we don't have to make that decision today. So I don't have a problem having it in the budget at one sixty with the understanding that down the road, we're going to make a final decision on what we're.
Because this will be vetted at municipal services before it comes to city council.
Correct. The goal would be as an entire package, including the agreement. So we'd solidify the entire package.
I had a few residents reach out that did support the digital sign at that intersection. So I was actually quite surprised.
And even if we were going to get a nominal amount back in advertising, it's something that we're not getting right now.
Advertising could be expensive. So again, you know, that's what I have.
And it helps cover there's an annual maintenance.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, the annual.
If it covered maintenance.
That would be ideal if it could cover the annual maintenance.
Forty twenty dollars for spending for the content.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'd like to just ask, is, is everyone in favor of opening up advertising to Darian businesses only? Because that can kind of give me some direction to say, hey, media or, you know, whoever we're going to be calling and saying, what's the going advertising rate? Otherwise, I'm not going to waste the time or broach that. But if there's, there's interest to sell advertising space to business owners, then you know, I kind of.
Why not? Darian should have priority, but not exclusivity because if you can't sell it out, why not open it to others?
Well, we'll have, personally, I think we'll have plenty of time. I mean, how many times, how many times per hour will you be taking to rerun all the meetings?
Well, one of the things that was proposed to, that was renegotiated with Chicago billboard was an opportunity for Darian nonprofits to promote an event at, at no charge or at a very reduced rate because they, they don't have money to advertise. So, you know, that to me seems ideal. You know, one of my contentions besides like the, the sign was going to be much larger than the one we're proposing was that, that we had no control over what was on that sign.
Right.
And I think the city maintaining control is critical. The city having the opportunity to communicate things, whether it's meetings or events that we're doing, a concert or like for instance, coming up citizen of the year. But I think it would be ideal to have the Cub Scouts be able to promote their pancake breakfast that's coming up, Darian Dash being able to be promoted, that kind of thing.
Sure, I think we're really, you know, is resurrecting what the city council back then had with Chicago billboards proposed. So am I sure with the timing, have to double check. We may have even had timing on whatever.
We did. It was very specific.
Yeah, so again, I think that was a great example that could be implemented. But back to Tom's point, you know, it's something I think we have to double check with their businesses or what the.
What the expectation is.
You know, when you think about it, it, it almost becomes an electronic billboard for what you put on direct connect.
Correct.
Because we put all kinds of non-for-profit, you know, Darian Garden Club, Lions Clubs, this, Women's Club, that. You know, we, we, we put that on there now in direct connect. So why not be able to put that on a sign?
Or even on our cable, cable station, you know, you look at the cable station, how long those ads run? You know, so I think that's a good example. And again, just looking at that.
What would you think of, let me ask the council this question. You have a new business that opens in Darian and, you know, we put in direct connect, you know, La Ponza, you know, and we put that in our direct connect as a way of introducing the community to that. Would you put La Ponza on that sign, new business in Darian, La Ponza, new business in Darian, you know?
Well, welcome to Darian, you know.
Welcome to Darian. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to get twenty four hours a day or even twelve hours, eighteen hours a day out of this, you're going to have to, you're going to be looking for a lot more content than just us and twelve businesses.
Well, it repeats itself. It's not like it's just you, it's, it's like on a reel, you know, but, but as a goodwill effort, I think for the city to like introduce a new business for like a period of like seven days, I'm just throwing that out there without much thought, like, you know, at no charge to them, just to welcome them, I think that's, that says a lot.
Create a business of the week and have that week sponsor the billboard, that business that week at fifty two a year.
There's a lot of possibilities with this. There really are.
But once again, it gives us the control. The city of Darian has the control, but I think going back to Tom's point, you want to just make sure the expectation on the part of that building is fairly clear or is down as to be defined later so that they don't come back to us and say, well, I mean, just as long as they don't have the expectation is that all that's going to be on that sign is their, their own buildings advertising because there's a lot more to be done.
That's, that's correct. I mean, that was never the intention by no means.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I'm just using that as an extreme. I'm just using it as an extreme.
Yeah, no, that's a very.
But there's a lot, obviously, there's a lot to be done here, a lot to be developed. But I guess I'm just want to make sure moving forward that there's a consensus by council members that that maximum of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars stays in the budget as a placeholder and the whole program will be defined as time goes on. Is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Tom? Yes, see heads shaking? Ted?
Yeah.
Yes, Joe?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Chairperson, you know, in regards to the comments about the water feature, is everyone, I get a little consensus on the water feature. I know my, you know, obviously Treasure Corin has voiced a concern about it, but again, you know, if, if it's not an opportunity, I'm not going to waste anyone's time by creating another, you know, feature, if you want to say.
Dan, if you said if the water feature was a thousand dollars or if you said it was thirty, you might get different answers. So you'd have to give some.
Okay, it says forty in there right now.
Forty for the, is that?
That's for kind of everything though.
To hook up and all of that.
Right, and that might be over, overestimated, but yeah, that's a, you know, might be twenty thousand, might be, you know, I guess I'm looking at the, right now, I'm looking at the aesthetics of everything.
Can I stop? Get a drink of water at the water feature? I'm just sorry. I'm just trying to lighten the mood. No.
You know.
How do people feel about a water feature? I think Dan's looking for a little guidance.
We have two already. I can live without it, that's for sure. It's forty thousand, in my opinion.
Let's forget the price, I'm sorry.
Okay, I know, but that's, but that's what I'm looking at. It's twenty five percent of what we're spending is on a water feature. I think it's way too much. If you want to have, if you can, if you can get me that twenty thousand dollar one, Dan, then we could.
That might, that might very well be. I mean, you know, I'm going for, I don't want to say a Cadillac, but you know, I'm, I'm pricing things to be conservative and I'm looking the aesthetics of everything, you know, that will draw people's attention. I, I think we came along from a marketing aspect already with the clock tower.
I just think with the, I, I just don't think we need another water feature, whether it's twenty thousand or forty thousand, you're going to have, people's attention's going to be drawn to the sign, not to what's happening underneath with the water. And you have one right across the street, then you have a ginormous water feature on the other side. I'd rather us not spend the money on the water feature.
Because you'll never put, you'll never put a water feature on the other corner because you got, that's all residential on the others.
Challenging me, Joe?
Unless you have a water.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I, yes, I have.
Then you can get the hose hooked up from the guy's backyard and, and run the water that way.
We'll do, what we do with water features across the street.
Eric, what's your opinion on the water feature?
Kind of like a Disney world where it jumps across.
Eric's not sure. Tom Clistic.
I've traveled a lot around the world. Have you ever thought about putting some type of unique art feature that doesn't need maintenance? A sculpture or a bronze thing up there besides just the water feature? Something that wouldn't have to be maintained, something that's maybe historical of Darian? Something unique. I, I don't know. I've, I've traveled all around the world and I see a lot of towns I go to, unique historical features, paintings, walls, history wall of Darian. I don't know. I'm just tossing something out there.
We don't have enough room for that. I really don't, you know, the footprint is not very big. That's why, again, thought process was to put a splash in there.
We could do a, we could do a bust of Dan, Dan's head and put it on.
We could do a bust of Dan's head and put it on.
Joe, thoughts on the water feature?
Yeah, I, I'd rather just keep the two. Across this, you know, clock tower and the Dunkin' Donuts corner.
Okay.
I don't think you need, you know, two's fine. Like I said, I mean, it'd be different, almost different, if you, if I thought in the future you'd be able to hit the four, the four corners with them, but no.
Don't forget, I'm working on someone with the county right now on that corner, the other corner. So nothing's impossible, okay? And if you're saying, could I, would I entertain it? If you gave me the green light on a water feature for the fourth corner, in a heartbeat.
Dan, now that you've said that, though, and really, the conceptual plan for that is, for a long time, and what you've been trying to do with the county, is some kind of wall.
Correct, yeah.
In replace of what's there now. So I just, Dan isn't planning a volcano water feature at this point on that corner. It's something maybe to go along with.
Picture Las Vegas with the.
Okay, the Bellagio, okay.
That's it.
All right, then.
You know what you're doing, at least that's right. So there you go, Tom. Gambling on gale. That's what we needed, like a marquee flash. You put a statue of Dan Gombach with his arms out like this, pointing to the three corners, okay?
With water flowing.
Okay, okay. Ted, water feature?
I'll be honest with you. The water feature that we put near the Dunkin' Donuts, it kind of adds to the water feature across the street that runs all the time. Putting a water feature down with that signage, I'm just going to think of an older building that's right there, and then a beautiful thing. I just, I don't think it's going to match. I don't think it's going to work. If it was, if it was a brand-new building, it's a different animal. But I just say that we just go with the marquee, so.
Did that help?
So the answer is no water feature, so we'll come back to that.
You're going to have an irrigation system for the plants, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Turn that on periodically.
Use colored, use colored water when you're watering.
Okay.
Okay, noted, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll.
Moving on to our other funds. Yeah, Miro, speak Mary. Does anyone need to take a break first? Bathroom break, snack break? Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. It is currently eight-twenty, okay? Business, okay. We are, we've got a couple of things left. We've got our municipal services motor fuel tax budget, the MFT. And then we have our special service area. These were all supplements that were sent to you guys. So it's page twelve of the supplement that went out. Motor MFT fund.
Would you rather I be quiet?
Uh, no, I did not expect you to be. So you want to start with Mike, and then we can get Dan to talk?
I'd just like to have some discussion on the rock salt, Dan. Because I know in December, I mean, we usually get a contract, and we're required to take eighty percent of the contract, and we can go twenty percent over. And this year's rate came in lower than last year's. I don't see anything, have we gone to, gotten bids yet for next year?
No, we're currently working on those right now. I just, part of a multi-group, multi-group, and we had a conversation with the county who's heading the actual bids themselves. And the question came out there whether or not we should, you know, just move forward with a second-year extension or go out to rebid. My, my thought process was to go out to rebid, and the county said, yeah, look, why don't we do that? Just due to the reason there's, I think there's a surplus out there.
Are we going to, are we going to need three thousand tons?
No, and that's already, I've reduced that to, having a conversation with Chris, I think I put it to twenty-three hundred versus three thousand, that twenty-three hundred. Then also gives us the opportunity to go with twenty percent additional to that. So we'll be back at the twenty-eight hundred plus the additives. I think we'd be perfectly fine.
What's the going rate for salt these days?
Uh, last nine years, seventy, is it seventy-eight, I believe, a ton?
So it's eighty-five in here.
Last, last year was eighty, two years ago was eighty-three. This current year we're in was seventy-nine. But the main reason I asked the question, in December, we didn't use our eighty percent last year, so we ended up going back to last year's vendor and paying the eighty-three to try and finish up what we were at, requested last year. My question is, on this year's, are we still required to do that eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay, so if we are, then I wanted to make sure we're probably looking at that surplus and saying.
Yes.
Order less.
That's, that's.
Commit to less this year.
Yes, and that was part of the inventory that we looked at and said, all right, the way it's going, we're not going to utilize it. And so there's been some reduction.
Yeah, I think everybody's going to be stuck with more salt. So I think the pricing for this coming year should be better. And, and in that regard, also, on the current year's salt, you're projecting two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, and we're at eighty, eighty-nine thousand through February twenty-eighth. Does the two-twenty-five entail getting up us to the eighty, eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we'll have room for storing that?
Yes, and I know we're going to be, I think we just placed some recent orders. I'm not sure how full we are yet. We may be at six, eh, close to seventy percent full. But yeah, it's something I'm monitoring as well.
And going forward, you're just projecting conservatively, keeping it pretty much at the same number we've been at, which, that's fine for now, I guess?
Correct. And once we go out to actual bid, which should be coming up April for the salt, we'll adjust it. From what I'm seeing right now, we'll adjust it to a lower tonnage.
That's it.
That's it for salt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll salt it out.
Looking on page thirteen, which is the summary with the breakdown by account, there was supplement information on the crack seal program. Any questions with that? And there was also a agenda memo regarding the I-DOT resolution authorizing the expenditure of MFT funds for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four general maintenance. Any questions on any of those items? As it relates to MFT budget? Dan, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. Everything you covered is exact.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, looking for their special services. Okay, we will move on from MFT on to the special services area. Number one, fund budget. Page twenty-two, questions with that? Yes, Mike?
If you notice, and I just would like a little more clarification on this. And it's basically showing that the fund is spent by the end of the third year, and there's some professional services, there's a big bump in it this year, and then the second and third year out. Are we anticipating something more? What, what's happening, I guess, with it, where the expenses going out?
You could cover that. I know that, you know, you have periodic burns, and I know there was a time when you did have to do a number of really stormwater projects in those basins, so you can answer.
Yeah, from what we're seeing right now, it's basically flatlines. So projecting out is what we're looking at in annual cost. I think the annual cost, right, and I don't have it in front of me, but we have scheduled burns, one basin per year. I think it's on a three-year basis, a three- or five-year basis. I'd have to double-check the contract. We have a five-year agreement, five-year contract agreements, all that pricing. I believe there's three years left on that contract. That includes management of the wetlands, which can mean additional plantings, eradication of undesirables, and the actual burn itself. As far as maintenance goes, I, you know, in-house maintenance, I think that's been running very well. It's been minimal. The biggest thing has been when we have beavers come in, so that could have an impact of anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars.
No, it's always maintained itself pretty well, but I mean, it's depleting itself over these three years, where it comes back down to zero. And it's because there's two major expenses in years two and three. You're telling, yet it sounds like you're telling me there's nothing unusual, it's sort of the normal maintenance.
Correct. And I'll double-check that again, just the figures themselves, but everything should be related back to the burns.
Because this affects the residents in that area.
Correct.
So if the fund is depleted, then would that mean that the residents in that area would have to pick up an additional amount?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not seeing it. I'll review it again tomorrow. But yeah, I'll clarify that.
That affects my area.
I know.
Yeah, I do not see.
That's nothing to do with my arguments here.
Right, no, 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 it's true. It's true. I'm, you know, I live right across the street from the Beaver Den.
Yeah, let me, let me double-check that, because really, it's, yeah, it should be, it should be level funded and really.
And, you know, in there is five thousand year contingency, and that really, which is good to have in there.
Right.
Because, you know, you don't know about that. And the real professional services are above that. So if there's no contingency spent, the fund, you know, will still have ten, fifteen thousand dollars in it.
Correct.
The third year.
That's what, that's what I anticipated without, you know, I'm not sure if I missed something in there, and that's why I just wanted to double-check.
Right, and when a burn doesn't happen because of just timing, which is what happened last year.
Right.
This past fiscal year, then there's no, the city doesn't get charged for it unless it happens.
Absolutely not. Yeah, it'll happen in the fall if not.
Yeah, we received notification on two different occasions that it was going to happen, and it didn't happen.
Right.
So, okay.
What about the wetlands that are west of Walmart and adjacent to the fire station? They used to do burns there, and they haven't done burn there in umpteen years.
It's really up.
There's just a mess in there.
I mean, to have a management plan, number one, should incorporate burns and/or additional plantings. We get involved when evasive plantings start taking over, okay? But there's nothing in the city code that says mandates for us to go back to the owners of those properties and put a management plan in effect. It usually works where if a new development comes in, they are under a five-year radar, if you want to say, to make sure, depending on the type of wetland it is, it may be three or five-year management plan that would be implemented as part of the development through a letter of credit, which we would also retain.
So clearly, those wetlands that Eric's referring to are not under the city's responsibility? Because it's not a special service area.
Correct, yeah, unless there was some violation, but you're exactly right. Terra Hills probably, you know, stems back to a court decree, and so there's, there's a lot of.
History there.
Yes.
And who's got to clean them up to remove all the truck tires and all the other?